Five meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, do we have anybody for public forum?
We do.
Okay, perfect.
Recast this meeting.
Oh, okay, great. Um. All right, the Board of Education provides the public forum as a method for precedence of other initiatives and actions and policy. Um, and policy to the board in order to allow for meaningful and effective forum, we request that each speaker comply with the following guidelines. Hm. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Individual speaking during public forum should not expect an immediate response from the board to any comments because the board will often not have complete information to respond. If it is inappropriate, the president will direct either or indirect or member of the administration to contact speakers on either parties. Comments at a later date. Faculty and other personnel have certain rights of confidentiality under state federal law that the district should respectfully text. Therefore, the board urges the residents and other speakers to reflect complaints or grievances about actions involving an individual student or individual member or the administration or faculty of the district to work with both the administration and central office administration. This will allow the district to protect the legal rights of the individuals and allow for more prompt and appropriate resolution of the complaint or grievance. Um, you know, essentially meaning we don't talk about faculty, students, or staff during public comment. Um, and. Thank you for your assistance. So our first person is Mr. Lane.
Thank you and good evening. Regarding the district's proposed ballot measures for the April election, I would like to offer some context and support in my role as a Maplewood City Council member. Because I have observed with interest and concern the resistance some current and former board members have expressed regarding proposals to address deferred maintenance and staff compensation through voter-approved no-tax increase measures, I wanted to share a counterpoint of support. Um, as most of you are likely aware, City of Maplewood voters approved a no-tax increase $6 million general obligation bond for street sidewalk and street lighting improvements known as Prop S in April of 2024. Council initiated discussions regarding that bond issue during the fall of 2023 with a potential list of capital projects discussed in a work session that October. Public town halls about the proposed bond issue were offered by the city in January and February of 2024. Additionally, the city created an informational webpage, mailed a notification postcard, and published a project list in the Maple Leaf Newsletter that spring. In short, it was a simple and straightforward public education campaign that lasted approximately four months. The measure Prop S passed with 75% voter approval last April. This is notable not only for its wide margin of community support, but also considering the failure of a more contentious city proposal on the same ballot. Maplewood voters were clear about what they value: capital investment and infrastructure that improves quality of life and commerce in our community. We know that available, we know from available data that the MRH School District is a primary driver in attracting residents to Maplewood and Richmond Heights. In this way, capital investments by the city and school district are mutually beneficial. People choose to live in communities with excellent public services. Quality public education is perhaps the most valuable public service a community can offer. Maplewood maintains a healthy fund balance well above the 25% mandated by the state. But as a council member, I am committed to ensuring that the city invests in infrastructure and services to the greatest extent possible. Those investments keep us thriving and ensure future growth. And they are balanced against informed perspectives provided by our bond council and municipal advisors that help us appropriately manage short and long-term expenses. I hope this board will fully consider its duty to invest and steward resources to keep the district among the top in our state and maintain its human and capital resources as thriving, robust, and inclusive public service for our residents. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service. Unfortunately, I won't be staying because I've got a sick kid out at home. But I do appreciate you all. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Laney Thompson Forbes.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Laney Thompson Forbes, and I am a third and fourth grade looping teacher at the elementary school. I'm also a proud alum of the MRH School District and have, I graduated from Maplewood High School in 2005. As a former student and now a teacher here since 2012, I have witnessed firsthand the need for updated furniture in our classrooms. I've been teaching here for over 12 years, and much of the furniture has been the same since when I started. I've seen broken furniture taken out but not replaced. This includes chairs with cracked seats and broken legs, which not only create an uncomfortable learning space, but also pose a safety risk to our students. I've heard countless complaints from students over the years about their discomfort. Furthermore, the lack of flexible, excuse me. Furthermore, the lack of flexible seating options severely limits our ability to cater to the diverse learning needs of our students. Many teachers, including myself, have resorted to spending our own money, creating GoFundMes and sharing wish lists with our own families and our own supporters to help provide yoga balls, wobble stools, other flexible seating and learning spaces for our students. This shouldn't be the responsibility of individual teachers. And it, um, also when teachers are left to furnish their own spaces to make students feel comfortable, it creates inequitable, inequitable classrooms, with some classrooms having access to what they need to learn and others without. The lack of adequate furniture also hinders effective instruction. We often lack the necessary tools for collaborative learning spaces and differentiated instruction. For example, kidney tables, uh, kidney-shaped tables that I need for small group instructions to instruct the lower elementary grades. And carpets for whole class lessons and class meetings. Teachers are forced to improvise by pushing desks together to create those spaces, and it creates inefficient and often really disruptive learning spaces. We pride ourselves in this district on creating safe and inspiring learning environments. For our students, however, without scheduled refreshes of our classroom furniture, we're unable to provide the optimal conditions for learning and growth that we hope to give the students. Our students deserve a learning environment that supports their diverse needs and fosters a love for learning. The proposed bond issue will allow us to provide them with the tools they need to succeed and remove a stress off the shoulders of teachers. This includes comfortable and safe chairs, a variety of seating options to accommodate, accommodate differentiated or different learning styles, and furniture that facilitates collaboration and active learning. I really urge the board to approve the bond issue to ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to reach their full potential.
Thank you. Our next speaker presenter is Ms. Madeline Brazan.
Hello, my name is Madeline Brazan, and I am a fifth, sixth grade ELA teacher at MRH Elementary. Um, I'm speaking today as well in strong support of the proposed bond issue specifically regarding the critical need for updated furniture at our school. Currently, our classrooms are severely lacking in adequate seating specifically. We have a limited number of chairs, many of which are outdated, cracked, and frankly pose a safety hazard to students. Daily, I have students commenting about how their chair has split, it's pinching their legs, or it wobbles so much they can't concentrate. A teacher on my team only has two chairs in her classroom that remain uncracked and has witnessed on multiple occasions students falling out of their chairs when the seat has split completely. Uh, this not only creates an uncomfortable and distracting learning environment for our students, but also hinders their ability to focus and learn effectively. At present, we are left playing a game of seek and find in an attempt to accommodate the growing needs of our building. Several classrooms have students in foldable chairs as a temporary solution, but this presents an additional issue. The foldable chairs are unstable, uncomfortable, and do not align with the district's dedication to accessibility. In an attempt to address the needs of my own students, furniture had to be brought up from the library and split between myself and a teammate's classroom. Myself and many of my teammates scour online marketplaces, hoping to find any seating options to bring into our classrooms. We cannot create safe and inspirational spaces when our first battle is scarce seating. Furthermore, the lack of movable furniture and seating options significantly limits our ability to implement modern, student-centered instructional strategies. Several times throughout each unit, myself and my team of teachers has to get to school early or use our planned time to rearrange our classroom desks and seating options to best fit our instructional practices. While we try our best, too often, our attempts at implementing hands-on and collaborative instruction with our present furniture situation feels like fitting a round peg in a square hole. Collaborative learning, group work, and differentiated instruction are essential for 21st century learning, but these approaches are difficult to implement effectively with the current furniture restrictions. The proposed bond issue would allow us to invest in high-quality chairs, flexible seating options such as standing desks, padded seating and stools, and movable furniture that can be easily rearranged to accommodate various learning styles and activities. This would create a more engaging and dynamic learning environment that fosters creativity, collaboration, and student agency. I urge the board to approve this bond issue. Investing in our students' learning environment is an investment in their future success and demonstrates to the MRH community that MRH is a district that holds student accessibility, safety, and modern learning as a priority within the education we provide. Thank you, guys.
Um, I'd like to do a couple of things out of the consent agenda just for discussion. It's, one is the architectural contract, and then I can't remember the Cosgrove maybe, and the other one's the huddle contract.
Cordegin Clark?
Yeah, he's about item eight. Yeah, Cordegin Clark.
Okay.
Second? Aye.
Done, okay. Motion passes, so we'll add this.
And then.
We need to approve the.
And then motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
All right, Paul in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Next, we have study items. That's where we're going to do the ballot measure, especially by Dr. Jameson.
Thank you. I'm excited to present this item alongside of Lorenzo Boyd from Stifel. My team and I have put a great deal of time into preparing for this presentation, but also the research in effort to ensure that we were identifying the needs for the district. So I wanted to start off by showing the alignment to our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education MSEP six standards. You'll note that five standards are listed, uh, which sit in the leadership component and also teaching and learning and database decision-making. So for the first few, it's more around how we as a district use our resources, personnel, school safety, intra- and interpersonal skills, and climate and culture. These also align to our strategic priorities in our strategic plan, which was adopted in the 2023 school year and ends in 2028. Um, and I want to note that all of the items that will be discussed today will impact both student and staff culture. Because the work that we do and part of our strategic plan highlights honoring our history and shaping our future, I spent some time actually doing some research to see what has been done in the past in the school district. And what I found was the Long-Term Facilities Task Force. And so I went through and identified some things that I thought situated well in the work that we're actually doing. So a few of the things that were highlighted was to uphold the board's commitment to bring good stewards of the community's investments in our schools, maintain and expand our commitment to safe and inspirational spaces, which you heard in public comment, and provide physical infrastructure, allowing the district to educate all students in an inclusive environment that sets them up on the path for success. Um, and that's the work that we're trying to do here in the district. So I wanted to show our timeline while it's not extensive. There are additional activities that took place. So I'll start in January of 2024. This process actually began with conversations with colleagues, more specifically Curtis Kane, Superintendent in Rockwood School District, and Dr. Veronica Harden Bartley from University City. Those conversations were rooted in the process for a bond. And in the case of Rockwood, the conversation was more so understanding the benefits of a debt service transfer to support the operating budget. During the same time, we also began to put accountability measures to support the strategic plan. And so as a point of reference, as I go through, you'll hear me reference a MOT, which is our management oversight teams and also strategic plan committees. Those are a result of MSEP six, which ensures that the board and the superintendent are monitoring our strategic plan. So the MOT actually started meeting in January of 2024. It include a cross-section of individuals, including staff, architectures, architects, and other individuals identified to help support with the work. You'll find going through March and April, a continuation of building tours to assess the needs of the district were completed, um, in addition to work being done around budget maintenance for deferred maintenance and compensation of salaries. So what we continue to find is that we didn't have enough funds in the operating budget to address the amount of deferred maintenance that took place. In addition to adequately supporting our teachers and staff, reminding the community that MRH teachers are second from the bottom in St. Louis County, and that is a grave concern. The work continued in July and August, uh, which included, um, being charged by the board to include as one of my goals to identify revenue-generating sources for the district as a means to provide funds. And this work actually continued in partnership with Stifel and Mr. Lorenzo Boyd, as well as others who have supported that work. Um, in those conversations, we had discussions about a law, um, I'm sorry, a bond, a levy, a combination of the two, or other creative ways to produce money to meet the needs of the district. Uh, we held a board community roundtable in September, which also included a presentation by Lorenzo Boyd from Stifel. And in that community conversation, we surveyed staff, the parents and staff who participated just to get feedback on the priority areas that were of interest. In that particular data that we collected, which was also presented to the board in October, we found that community indicated that the primary focus was on increasing the salaries and benefits for staff in addition to safety and security improvements, as well as facility maintenance or infrastructure improvements. The district also submitted a survey to the community by which the participants who completed the survey identified the same three areas as opportunities for us. So within that work, we continue to work towards our efforts, and the initial ballot language was proposed and shared with the board in addition to the directive, the budget directive being approved in 2026. I'm sorry, for 2026. So within the new budget directive, it included a priority to look at maintenance across the district as well as placing a priority on increasing the salaries and benefits of staff. So the first item that, before I jump into, we did receive several questions, um, from the board in regards to the difference between a bond, um, as well as a lease agreement, which is also called COPS. And so I'm going to invite Mr. Lorenzo Boyd to provide some additional context regarding those two types of bonds and the benefit of doing one over the other and what would be potentially best for MRH. Uh, Mr. Boyd, if you would unmute. Maybe? I'll continue, um, and hopefully he'll pop back on. Um, so what the debt service transfer does, and it's a unique way to generate revenue, um, and this is the idea that I actually received from Rockwood School District. And so the way that it works is you look at your current debt, and for MRH, if you have been following the previous community conversations as well as the work sessions, you will find that our current, um, debt service levy is set at a dollar and 35 cents. And so in looking at how much money is actually needed to pay our debt, we do have additional funds that can be transferred from our debt service into our operating budget, which would actually support increasing teacher salaries. And so the recommendation, uh, that we are having is a 50-cent transfer from the debt service, um, levy into the operating budget, which would produce $2.2 million approximately, which will help us to address some of the teacher deficits that we're seeing in salaries. Uh, Mr. Boyd, I was going to open it up for you to share the difference between a lease agreement and also a bond and the benefit of doing either one over the other. I think you're muted.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Chris. Uh, thanks for having me. And sorry, I didn't mean to be there, uh, in person, not a town at a conference, but, uh, as you mentioned, Dr. Jameson, there are, um, some key differences between a lease revenue bond issue and a general obligation bond. For instance, a general obligation bond, I think I've, um, uh, kind of went over this briefly in some of my previous presentations. A general obligation bond is one that is, um, needs to be voted on, uh, by members of your public. Um, it's either a four-sevenths or a two-thirds voter approval. Every April is four-sevenths, and this year with, with it being an odd number year, uh, you only have one opportunity to pass at a four-sevenths voter approval, which is this April. Uh, the other, uh, the other actual votes this year for a general obligation bonds, for a general obligation bond issue after April, um, are two-thirds. Next year, you have three opportunities, April, August, and November. Um, with the general obligation bond, uh, those funds are supported through your fund three, through your debt service fund. So right now, the school district has a debt service fund, um, at approximately a dollar 35. And, um, this will be supported through that fund three levy. General obligation bonds also, um, are supported through an ad valorem tax, which means it's an unlimited tax, um, by the voters. Um, the difference with a lease, oh, I'm sorry, and the general obligation bonds, um, those are, uh, rated through the Missouri Direct Deposit Program, which is rated AA+ whereas your state aid is intercepted, uh, 10 times a year on an, on an equal basis in one-tenth increments. And, uh, it also is supported by your underlying let, um, your underlying rating, which is double A minus. Um, those are the bonds in the market that have the lowest fees, um, because they're an ad valorem tax and are supported through the state aid direct deposit program and then through your underlying rating. And since it's an ad valorem tax, it's, uh, the lowest-rated bonds, um, lowest-rated bonds, uh, in the municipal market and therefore have the lowest fees and the lowest, lowest interest rates. Uh, with lease revenue bonds, uh, there's a couple of different, uh, couple of different things. Those can either be, those can either be supported, uh, those will be supported through your fund four, so your operating fund. Um, depending on, uh, your current operating situation, uh, depending on your, depending on your current operating situation, um, you can actually go, you can also choose not to go to the voters if you can support, if you can support, uh, your current, um, leasehold bonds, your current leasehold bonds through your operating levy. If you cannot support those bonds, uh, through your lease operating levy, they will require a vote of the people, uh, and that is a simple majority. Because those are annual appropriation bonds, uh, those bonds are, have higher fees and higher interest rates because they're not supported by an ad valorem tax and are supported through, uh, your fund for levy. So with that, I'll, I'll pause. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, and one other thing, since those are annual appropriation, appropriation bonds, those would be rated one notch below your general obligation bond and underlying rating, which is double A minus, which is a great rating that you guys have. So those bonds would be automatically rated one notch below that, which is A plus, which would then garner a slightly higher interest rate in the municipal market.
I had a question, i- i- if you can give an answer, sort of in general, or maybe right now, what is the difference in the interest rates between the two?
Uh, I'm sorry, and who was, who's speaking?
This is Jenny. Sorry.
Um, so, uh, probably the difference between it will be depending on where you are in the yield curve. As you know, general obligation bonds, um, they go from, well, let's say, general obligation bonds to keep everything static from one to 20 years. So in the early years, you could probably experience about, um, a 15 to 20 basis point differential between the two, which is 0.2%. Um, and then in the later years, let's say years 15 through 20, uh, you could possibly experience a 30 basis point difference between the two. And fees are probably across the board for all parties are probably about, I would say, about 20 to 25% higher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before I move on?
Well, as stated, uh, we have put a considerable amount of research time and effort. Uh, Dr. Dietrich has been working closely with his management oversight team to develop a comprehensive list of projects, which we have minimized to prioritize based on the work that he's done in his management oversight team based on the priorities, as well as, um, the information or feedback that he's received from the, for our resources strategic plan committee. This ask and consideration is to, uh, place a debt service transfer in the amount of 50 cents on the April 8th, 2025 ballot, and the funds will address a critical and long overdue need in the area of salaries and benefits. But I think the other, um, benefits that are not listed there would include, uh, helps the district to stay competitive in the region. Uh, we typically, when interviewing candidates, which takes a lot of time and effort by Dr. Amber Phillips' office, the candidates typically wait us out until they receive offers from a Clayton, Ladoo, Kirkwood, by which we have to start the process all over again. Um, that also includes teachers sitting in, uh, interview panels that they're not being compensated for. Um, it also helps to sustain, uh, the culture. The district has been working closely with the NEA to improve culture, and we are definitely moving in the right direction. Um, and lastly, it supports our current effort to retain teachers as well as to be able to recruit them. Um, I'll sit this there. That is the proposed ballot language, and for this particular proposition, uh, we are naming it Proposition E for Empowering Educational Excellence, and this ensures that we can continue the excellence of education that we've been providing. Um, if you haven't read any of the articles, the district currently has the second highest growth within the state, and we are, uh, fourth in, uh, the state out of 532 districts, and we are in the top 1% of the state, as well as, um, being, um, second with the highest APR in the St. Louis County region. And this is the result of the teachers who are serving our children in the classroom. I'll pause there to see if there are any questions in regards to the proposed ballot language.
Just, just to clarify, the, um, part of the, the language is proposed as well as the, whatever this proposition is named, and ultimately, this is, that's part of the proposal, that we can make amendments to the language and/or the letter.
Yes, yes.
Lorenzo, I have a couple of questions. Um, as you, you mentioned the, um, interest rate, if we went out this year, it would be about 2%. Did I catch that correctly?
Say again?
Oh, sorry, this is Brian, by the way, on the board. The, um, did you say a moment ago that if, uh, we went out this year, the interest rate, uh, based on our current rating would be about 2%? Is that correct?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
So I'm not sure where, uh, the 2%. I.
I believe that was the difference between the two types of bonds you were talking about.
The difference, okay. Wha- wha- what's the interest rate that we would be able to, um, expect if we went out this year?
Yeah, so, um, so on general, general obligation bonds, um. I would say probably if you were to issue the bonds right now, but who knows what the market will be, let's say in May, when you actually go to sell the bonds. Uh, but I think right now in the municipal market, I priced the transaction, uh, on Tuesday of this week, was similarly rated, um, transaction, and it was right around 4.3% on a 20-year basis. That's still that all-time historic low rates, um, and, um, but we've seen a recent uptick in municipal rates, um, just this week, uh, about five to 10 basis points. But right now, if you were to actually price that transaction on a geo basis, probably right around 4.3%.
Okay, so about four, you know, so about $400,000 in interest.
Say, say again?
So the payments each year running about $400,000 on this, the administration's proposed $8.8 million. Actually, the bond would be for $3 million more, so, okay, I'll have to recalculate. So it's about 450, I guess, then. What, 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 let me just ask the follow-up question. What if we waited one year? What's your expectation if we waited? Um, what's your expectation if we waited one year and we were able to handle a number of the items in the list on a lease purchase agreement and, um, and went, uh, one year from now?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a, a, a pretty tall ask. Um, that's, that's, uh, waiting, you know, if we're, if we're thinking about it, this is January right now, um, so that by the time, um, you issue those bonds next year, uh, you will look at issuing those bonds probably right around May of two thousand twenty-six. Um, I'm not sure what interest rates are going to be at that, at that point. I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the risk. Um, interest rates could be a lot higher, or they can be a lot lower, but that just depends on interest rates at the time of, um, of issuance. Um, I really can't say that definitively, Brian, in terms of what we can expect those interest rates to be, you know, eighteen months in the future.
Okay. Sorry, the last question, I know, uh, the, I think the question was sent to you already, and you, I think you already answered it, but just for the benefit of, of the, the whole public here, um, I had sent in a, a request to consider a sixty cent increase in the operating levy, not a fifty cent increase, and a corresponding sixty cent decrease in the, um, the, um, debt levy for at least a year, maybe two years. What, what's your thoughts about that? I understand you, you weren't too favorable to that proposal, but just if you could explain a bit why?
Uh, and it wasn't, I wasn't favorable, Brian. Um, it's just in terms of if you were to decrease your debt service fund, uh, levy to seventy-five cents, um, the way we have it right now, we're actually, the district, the school district has a, a, a pretty good, um, uh, healthy fund balance on its debt service side. Um, right now, with the next three years, your required levy on your existing debt, uh, is a little over, um, I think I had it right here, a little over, uh, ninety cents.
Right.
Um, in terms of just your current debt without increasing, without putting on any new debt. Um, so I'm sorry, so it was ninety-seven cents for the next three years. If you were to lower that to seventy-five cents, I do know that where we are, we're drawing down the fund balance on the current situation of eighty-five cents to keep your fund balance above fifty cents. Lowering it to seventy-five cents, um, you would not, if we want to keep that levy, um, at fifty cent, I mean, I'm sorry, fifty percent, where it doesn't really have a negative impact on your municipal bond rating, you probably, you would not be able to get the full fifteen million at this point, and we were looking at probably right around twelve, twelve-and-a-half million.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Brian, can you say more about what you're thinking about with the, um, levy, or, um, I'm sorry, a COGS now and a bond next year?
Well, it was just, it, it, it was two things. Yeah, it's a good question. One, in, in part, it was trying to take, um, account of the request of the presenter last month, who asked that we slow down and, and look at some other options. So it was just, like, let's see what, what other options might be available. Second, um, I think more importantly is, you know, as I, as I did mention last meeting, the fifty cent increase is not enough. Like, we, we have to go back to the voters for more. It's not going to get the job done. And so I would like it to be a higher number, uh, at the front end, so we maybe delay just a little bit longer the need to go back to the voters so quickly. Um, so that, that's, that's my thinking, is how high could we go in this round so we delay the need to going back to the voters so quickly for more? Because, yeah, anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate some creative thinking. I, I continue to have concerns about the impact of deferred maintenance on the operating budget. So even if we increase a sixty, you know, sixty cents, who knows how much we'd have to go out for a busted air conditioner, or, you know, um, tho- those sorts of things that couldn't wait a year if they happened to now.
Right, yeah, no, I, I agree with you. Um, yeah, and I'm certainly sympathetic to that concern. I, I think the issue is, um, yeah, it wa- it was wanting to take seriously the public comment and just to see what was doable. And there are other, the other solution is, as he's been mentioning, is the lease purchase, uh, arrangements. And we could, we could handle a number of these items that way for maybe a year. And, but, but I, but I'm, you know, I'm also concerned about the interest rates changing. This, at this rate, with a twelve million dollar, uh, bond issuance, it's about, it's five hundred ten thousand dollars a year. That's, that's a lot, um, for the district to, to shoulder. Um, but, um, so I'm just looking for ways to maybe mitigate the immediate impact.
Sure. And I think we talked about this a little bit last time, but right now, what we're proposing, in, in my opinion, that, and that was confirmed last time, is really the most conservative, um, approach to raising funds and actually to save us. You know, we, if we did do a large now, except that we weren't going to ask later, um, there's no guarantee that there would be enough to sustain us until then later. I think it's much better to sort of work in increments that are bite-sized. I mean, whenever you're talking about this kind of money, I mean, it is, it's, um, it's hard to, you know, I mean, I don't want to empath, you know, dismiss the, the amount of money we're asking for, but it's also important to recognize the necessity, like, you know, this has to get done. And I think that approaching it in a very conservative way, um, that we aren't taking risks, that we aren't, um, I mean, I look at the lease purchases more as like a high-risk, you know, high, um, interest credit card. And, um, I, I feel like there's a lot of danger, um, to, to that instrument because, um, my understanding of, of those types of instruments, um, you know, when they're funding capital projects, a lot of times it'll be like, let's say, an apartment complex, well, you can pay the interest with the rent that you're generating from, um, from renters, but there is no other revenue source for us. You know, so we, we're, um, I think that that generally is, is just the danger of doing that. It's not to say that we, we would totally rule it out in the future, but, um, one, we have to be careful about the amount of money we take, if we did take any money with a, a lease purchase, because as, uh, Mr. Boyd was just saying, you know, if we can't sustain it, we'd have to go back to the voters. And, and then we have to explain to them, hey, you know, basically, like, we overspent, and I, I just don't want to be an acquisition.
Uh, and please, and please, and keep in mind, too, if, if you do a lease purchase, I think the school district is interested in, uh, getting more operating revenue to, uh, help the teachers. If you do a leasehold revenue bond issue at this point, that's going to come from your operating fund as well. So you're trying to get more money to the operating side, but you're also, um, taking money from the operating side by issuing a lease purchase, which has to be paid out of the operating fund.
And I think for the benefit of the public is we really have two separate issues going on that we're resolving with two separate tools, and so, but the two issues affect each other. And so that's why these sort of conversations are weaving. Like, I don't think anyone is in denial that we need to do Proposition E. I think to Brian's point, it was that, is that enough for our teachers, right? Like, is this going to be enough? And, and how can, you know, what, what does that, what do those numbers look like if we went a little higher? And it sounds like, at this point, that's just not going to be feasible. For me, on the bond side, and it seems like, I mean, I, I've never been opposed to the bond. For me, it's how much are we asking for, right? And so the whole time, for me, I don't want to just go out and say, give me, give me whatever we can take, and not have a plan for it, because I think that's an irresponsible, uh, position for this board to take. So that's why, for me, this information and the research into what actually needs to be fixed is what I have been looking for and asking for, for a while. And so, and I wanted to hear from the district, from the people on the ground, what do you need the most, right? Because if we borrow the full fifteen million, that's all we can borrow, right? That's all we have. And so I'm also leery of going to the full extent of what we can borrow all at once, because I think that could be a dangerous position. And so, you know, you know, I'm, it's unfortunate. I mean, I have kids, they complain about the chairs all the time. They're in high school. They're not, so you're not alone. And it's unfortunate it's gotten to the point where they're all this bad, right? And I think we all recognize the need that there are certain things, capital projects, that need to be paid for. I just think it's, which ones are we going to ask the public to borrow money for, and, and how much is that number? And to the point about lease purchase, we also have a lease purchase we have to roll into the bond, correct? That we have for this building now. Is that, that's accurate, yeah. That's three million, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, so it's whatever this is, plus the three million is what we need to borrow. And, and where I'm at is not, do we do the bond, it's how much do we do it for? So that's the question I'd love for us to.
That's the next.
The next one. Okay, great, perfect. Thank you. It's coming. Just set you up.
Perfect. Um, so to that question, um, and we did reduce, so some of the feedback from the board when we initially introduced the initial projects, um, and we do, when we go out, we're looking at, how do we maintain our facilities, but also how do we create safe and inspirational spaces for our students and our staff? Um, so the areas of need, uh, this is just an overview that you see academic programming, so anything that students would benefit from, safety, security, infrastructure would be some of those capital projects. And then activities, um, is more of athletics, and I'll, um, get to that piece here in a bit. So based on the acts of the board, we did go through to prioritize based on how the management oversight team identified what the critical aspects were. Um, so for safety, um, replacing the high school compromised doors, we do, if you've been in the high school, have doors that aren't necessarily suited, uh, for safety for anyone. Um, and then in addition, secondary locks on classroom doors. So some of our doors, um, the way that they are actually, I guess, in place, doesn't necessarily allow us, if we have an intruder, to ensure that the staff and students are, are safe. And I, I will give an example. I believe when we had, um, intruder drill training, and I was in a classroom over at the elementary school, and to hear a classroom teacher whisper to students, my job is to keep you safe, recognizing that they have families, too. We have a responsibility to our students and our staff. So that would allow us to, um, have a better, um, mechanism in place versus the string around the door that we got when we received the training. Um, currently, we have some blind spots in our buildings, particularly the, um, high school building, which we call Building A. And, um, there are places that, while, uh, we know our students make fantastic choices, sometimes, um, uh, they fall into, um, making poor choices, and there is nothing for us to look at. And then we also, at the elementary school and some of the other campuses, don't have cameras for our external places, which is also a safety matter, too. Um, so we discuss additional electronic door accesses for, uh, multiple buildings. So currently, we did include additional access points in our previous bond, but with the consideration of some of the classrooms, particularly at the ECC, additional, um, access points are needed as well in other buildings. And then signage is another piece as well. Um, if you've ever been in the high school building, it is a complex place to maneuver. Um, after four years, I figured it out, but if we have visitors in our campus, we do need to not only, um, include signage there, but external signage, um, too. There were additional safety items included. We did remove those, not that we don't think that they are needed, but as a means to ensure that we're able to emphasize the more critical pieces, this is what we have here. So I'll pause to see if there are any questions in regards to the safety items, and since Dr. Dietrich compiled this wonderful list with the assistance of Navigate, if you have questions, I'll call him up to support with the answers.
I'm just curious, how many cameras do we get for two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars? Sorry to make you get up.
Fifty-four.
It's fifty-four, okay, is it back on the sheet?
He's on the, he's on the committee.
So it wouldn't just be those fifty-four new cameras. Uh, there would also be, uh, the current cameras that we have. Um, there's quite a few that are obsolete, um, so we'd be replacing some of those as well.
And this is all just the high school?
No.
No, okay.
So, so currently, we only have three cameras on our ECC campus. Um, I think we have six at our elementary campus. So it's a matter of, one, expanding where our new construction is at the high school, making sure that those areas are covered. Because we have a new building, the exterior cameras that were there don't cover the areas that they used to, because we put giant walls in front of them. Um, so, and then in addition to that, um, creating more indoor and exterior. Um, I actually toured with the building principals, walked through the buildings, and we actually looked and said, okay, where do we need our cameras? We need them here, we need them here. We're, uh, I appreciated them walking the buildings with me and helping plan that out.
And then I'm, I'm assuming no one monitors them live, so is it just in case there's an incident that occurs that you're, or does, is there some?
Um, there's nobody just watching them live. Um, and there's technology for that.
Okay.
But these are, um, just cameras that are going out that, you know, pretty much.
If something happens, you have, okay.
You're documenting. And they help with, you know, as a former principal, they help from, with investigative purposes, you know? Um, if it's on the camera, it's done, it's, you have the conversation, you have all of the witnesses and getting everything stirred up in the building, so.
Thank you.
You may want to stay up there.
I'm going to.
Um, so for academic programming, uh, we did have quite a bit listed before. Uh, we did decrease the items that were included. Uh, there's a dire need for a seat-to-table classroom on the elementary school campus. Uh, the ECC library, uh, is, uh, back down in the basement. It is not safe nor inspirational for students. Um, and so I do want to lift that up, and I think that would be a great opportunity to provide those opportunities for kids to, uh, enjoy the space where they also enjoy books. Um, there is a need to also do some upgrades at the high school theater floor, lighting, curtains. Um, and sometimes, when you start doing that work, others surprise the surface, as we have found in our previous construction. Um, but those would be the academic programming, um, projects that we've identified. But again, there are other projects that were included that we removed as a means to decrease the amount of money being asked for from the community.
So the half a million for a seat-to-table classroom, what does that entail? That's a lot. So I'm just curious what we.
Yeah, uh, so it'll actually be in our current garden space. Uh, we worked with, uh, Mayor Greenberg actually donated his services and pro bono'd the design of the classroom, um, using Conex containers. Um, but it would be as green and sustainable as we can make it. So you would have a Generac or Tesla wall, you would have solar panels, um, anything and everything, so that we could talk to kids about where energy can come from. Um, how do we have a zero-carbon footprint in a space? Uh, we'd recycle the gray water out into the garden, use that. Uh, but that would include furniture, construction, um, um, but I think that number, um, personal, I think it's a little high.
Okay.
But, you know, with everything, you know, you're trying to build in contingencies, because that's one of those where we're probably going to have to open up the soil a little bit.
Yeah.
Right? When you do that, you're doing testing. Uh, so we've tried to put in, you know, we haven't just completely escalated those numbers, but there's definitely some, and most of these, there's some contingency in there.
Okay. And do we have an existing seat-to-table classroom then that'll free up space in the elementary school?
Yeah, it's, it's on the second floor.
That's what I thought, right.
So like, with no windows.
Okay, so there'll be extra space, space in the elementary.
The laws, it.
Oh, sorry, Brian.
Uh, sorry, real quick, Mike, the, um, ECC library piece, um, in the Navigate report, it was at one-point-two million, and now you're saying three-fifty. Um, what, what was changed?
Yeah, two different projects. One was, do we move the ECC library out of where it currently is? And we have that deck on the back of the building, so how do we move that and convert that space so that you have this beautiful library overlooking, you know, the play space? And, uh, but a lot of issues with that, because there's no way through there. In order to get to the library, you'd have to go through the gymnasium. Um, so, uh, those costs continue to escalate for that project. Um, so knowing that, you know, we need to be good stewards of our money, um, we decided, like, let's look at the space they currently have, and how do we make that beautiful for kids?
Thank you.
The last list here is, uh, the most extensive around infrastructure. Just to give an example, this week, along with the snow melting, we actually had two buildings with leaks. Um, so, uh, we are requesting roof repairs, uh, ceiling tiles for the secondary campus, where Jenny has noted that some work is needed there, a main distribution feed, closet remodel, a distribution antenna system for the high school. Um, and I did talk to Dr. Dietrich about this. This is similar to the issue or challenge we were having at the elementary school, where in case of emergencies, teachers cannot use their cell phones. Um, it is a dead zone. Um, so that would also address that, too, I believe.
Yeah, there, there's actually two different issues at the high school. One is, not just cell phones don't work, but they're a part of the buildings where, uh, fire department radios and police radios do not work. Um, so that cost there is actually two systems. One is so that cellular devices work, um, on. One is so that cellular devices work on basically Building A that we just did. We basically built a giant Faraday cage for floors, the ground floor and floor one. So we'd be doing one for cell and then the second one for first responder transmissions.
Does that help with wifi? Sorry, excuse my.
No, so we're already wifi through that whole thing.
Okay, because the kids always complain about the wifi at the high school, but maybe it's the cell service they're complaining about.
Tech department is the one department I don't oversee.
Okay.
And I won't read the full list, but one of the items I do want to point out is the replacement of the heat pumps. We have invested quite a bit of money. That was a project that was also noted in the long-term facilities plan for the task force that was not included for that. And then we continue to have HVAC issues at the ECC. But I do want to call out furniture. We did have staff members to address that here currently. And I would also say that this was an item that was brought forward by our student board reps. And I'm in the buildings frequently and I hear it as anecdotes. So I do want to make sure that I call that out because one of the things we value is student voice and we're here to serve them as well as our staff. The other items are more, again, projects that we're hoping to have completed. The hot water plumbing has been a concern as well. And then the secondary kitchen renovations. We did make some adjustments to the initial proposal for the ECC and elementary kitchen. There are some needs there, but versus doing a complete renovation of the kitchens there, we'll kind of do some refurbishing for that. And the other item I would like to point out are the parking lots need dire assistance. And so we're hoping to get all of the parking lots completed versus one. So I'll pause there to see if there are any questions for Dr. Dietrich.
I, of course, had a couple. I'm sorry, furniture, does that, can you just give us a ballpark of what's included? That's a lot of money, I know it's expensive, but.
It's a lot of money.
Is it a lot of furniture?
It's a lot of furniture.
And is it addressed, like, I assume it addresses the needs that were raised tonight in public forum?
That would address all three of our campuses.
All of them, okay.
All three of them and not just student seating, but seating like, if you think about like the gym lobby where.
With the power board.
The power board brought forward. It would address that, it would address, you know, when I was principal of the middle school, I was asking for new furniture in the commons because it's ripped, it's falling apart. We still have the same furniture there. But so not just student furniture in classrooms. This would really put us in a position where we could build out and say, now that we have this, how do we now maintain this over the next 10, 15, 20 years? Where we're not in a position where we have to spend $1 million at one time.
Correct, that would be great.
How do we do that over years?
Perfect. And then my other question was just, I wasn't sure what was included in maintenance equipment. I couldn't find like one line item in the original report.
Oh, so there's a couple of things there. One would be right now, our forklift. I actually found the history on that. It's a 1953 and Clayton donated it to us in like, I think it was 1982 is what I was being told. So they donated it to us because it was basically obsolete for them at that point. We took it on, we were getting it repaired the other day and the guy was like, we're really, we can't work on this anymore. So with trying to think about how do we buy something that does multiple things, we're also, we're learning through these last couple of days with snow that we don't have the equipment to do that either. So this would be buying a bobcat that we could have a snow scoop on, but also put forks on. So we can use it to unload trucks, but we can also use it with snow removal for just a little bit more than replacing the forklift. And we get dual tool.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I'm sorry, that would also include the tractor for the field, making sure that we're keeping field maintenance. Yeah, so there's two items in there.
The last item, this is one that I've heard in all three of my years and probably will hear in my fourth year when I go to Dr., to Mr. McCollum's. Better MRH pitches is the track and field. The track is compressed, we cannot generate any revenue to hold any track meets and quite honestly, the kids deserve it. So here, Dr. Dietrich went through field updates, field scoreboard. I wanted one of those boxes, I don't know what it's called.
Press box.
Press box is not included. With an inclusion of that, we would be able to have our students to comment the games out of the press box instead of out of the window. So would be the ask for that. But the tractor would actually support the field that's putting in. And I believe that Dr. Dietrich did a great deal of research in regards to that, so if you wanted to give some additional context.
Yeah, I actually have three different companies who are emailing me today and saying, are you guys voting tonight? Because they're ready to give our pitches, their pitches for the field and the track. And we already have proposals from them. But the, the field is actually a hybrid field between what you would get, whether it's natural grass or turf. You know, as a purist, I don't like turf, but also as a means of protecting our kids, I don't like turf because injury rates are 20 times greater on students that play out turf. But this would be a natural, I'm sorry, what? But do they win?
They win.
Yes, they do. So this would be a natural grass field, but in the goalie boxes, because we don't have a practice field like a lot of other schools do. Our goalie boxes really struggle to come back after every season and we're out there putting, we can go by it right now. We had yellow tape around it so we can get the goalie boxes back. This would actually be a new technology where we actually grow a natural grass field. Once that natural grass is in, they come in and they plug it with synthetic fibers, anywhere from a 20 to 60% rate. So that it doesn't, and then the grass continues to grow next to those synthetic fibers. We can run our, you know, tractor right over it, we can cut, as long as you don't cut too far down. But the difference is a turf field, you're looking at 1.3 million, this we're looking at 575,000. So, and it would give us a safer and to me, a better playing surface, but also one that we can look at and really be proud of. Right now, the only field with that technology in the state of Missouri is the Kansas City Chiefs and if they're sidelined, they're testing it right now.
So with the modified project list, we're looking at 8.8 million dollars.
I did have one question because I don't know, on this Navigate report, they had additional line items for all the sort of buckets for contingency permits, professional services. So I didn't know if we anticipate, you know, this seems to be the cost for the actual projects, but that we will need to add some sort of additional amount on top of that. Do we know what that is?
So that would Navigate already. We kind of separated out, like, what are the items that are going to need design team? What are the projects that are pretty straightforward that, you know, I can just handle as director of operations? What are the ones that are more intensive, like the hot water one at the high school? That's one where you're going to want a project manager or somebody who is on top of it and makes sure it's getting done right because there's going to be issues with. So what do we need design team for? What can Mike handle? And then what can a company like Navigate assist us with? We don't have those numbers yet because we can't get those till we decide what we're going to be doing. But in general, you can look at, you know, roughly, and we've got Corrigan Clark here too, probably 6 to 9% for architecture fees. You're looking at, you know, anywhere from 4 to 6% for an owner's rep. But they may not be on the same projects, one may be on one and one may be on the other.
Does this athletics budget, does that take into account the environmental study that might work remediation?
There's actually no need because all you're doing is regrading the field. Yeah, you're, you're not, we don't have.
Perfect.
You know, if you're going below surface, yeah, that's going to be something that you would look at, but you're not going below surface.
So Mike, assuming for the sake of argument that we go for these bonds and they're passed, is the assumption, you said you're gonna, you're getting bids already. Is the assumption that we're going to be able to start making these purchases this summer and make these changes this summer? For, use the furniture example, would we be able to purchase that furniture?
Furniture would be the first thing I would probably be jumping on besides the track. And, you know, mainly because this isn't furniture that you, you know, can go to Ikea. You know, this is furniture that we're expecting lasts us, you know, 10 to 20 years. And all furniture is taking, I mean, months right now.
The replacement of my school heat pumps is not on the Navigate list? I'm just wondering if that's a new development or?
Yeah, so when we were touring the buildings, we were looking at more like surface things and, you know, what can we see with, with the eye? As we continued to investigate the buildings, other people that had experience prior to me were like, hey, you know, we were looking at heat pumps a couple of years ago. And we didn't, that hasn't, so they've been, we've been fixing them a few at a time. So a couple of years ago, I think we were a little over a million or just under a million for replacing all of them. So now instead of replacing all of them, I think there's 60, 61 or 62 that we still have to replace. I was unaware of that and then through research, I found that.
And then the field scoreboard and track and field lighting, track and field lighting being 389,000. Is there a requirement to do that right now or is, I mean, is it failing? Or is it just about replacing it for the future and cost savings from LED?
I would say cost savings from LED. Where it's also easier to direct those lights. So out of respect for the community, I can tell you that there's a community member that lives near Taco Bell who every time the lights go on, I usually get an email or a text. But, you know, so it's, you're not able, those condensant lights, you can't direct them as well as you can LEDs. So being in a, you know, if we were out in, you know, Festus or somewhere like that where, you know, it's more open and you don't have neighbors all around that high school, which, I don't know, I've never been to Festus High School, so. But a lot more efficient how we direct those lights. Yes, we're going to save money by doing it, but also while you're in the field and you've got it dug up, I would hate two, three years from now to have to go back in and add lighting and put cranes and everything else on a brand-new track or a brand-new field. So to answer your question. No, it's not imperative. The new scoreboard, we actually had it, it broke about two months ago. And they have to call the guy that retired to come work on it. It's, I think it's 20 something years old, which is past its time.
You mentioned a press box, but that's not included. Do we know what?
I did, Dr. Dietrich did not price bid it. And it was one that I was highly interested in adding because I do think that that would be something that would be beneficial for students who are actually.
Maybe one of our community partners would sponsor it.
Yeah, maybe we get some cost savings at the end of this, we can save up for that.
I'm a taxpayer too. I'm going to save every penny I can.
Okay, thank you, this was really helpful.
Thank you.
Dr. Dietrich for putting the numbers together and also to navigate.
Yeah, and I, again, I just want to like reiterate though, this is still the wish list, right? I mean, this, it is the hope. Given that we have no idea what's going to happen with construction material prices, you know, and so this is the intention, this is the recommendation. And reality will likely look a little different, okay?
Thank you for making that point, because I was.
And that was the reason why we kept the ask for 15 million, not that we thought that we were going to exhaust it. But I did have some conversation with Lorenzo in regards to what happens when we don't use the funds. So if, Lorenzo, if you're able to address that question for the board and community, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, Dr. Jameson and myself had a discussion about the, about the proceeds. So one of the rules that you look to whenever you issue general obligation bonds is to how much you can reasonably expect to spend in a three-year period. So we discussed that as well. So one of the things that the attorneys will look at when it's time to do your projects is to look at what's going to be spent within the first three years. So if that amount comes to 11 million, that's what you'll be able to issue at that point. If you can reasonably expect to spend all 15 million in a three-year period, we'll go ahead and issue all those bonds at that point. In addition, we know that sometimes this possibly has not happened, you know, more recently, but it has happened. But I think someone brought up construction costs. If for some reason you plan on spending 15 million and all your projects come in well under budget and there is a half a million dollars left from the 15 million dollars, then there's usually, what the attorneys recommend is to have a catch-all for things that may not specifically be addressed in some of your marketing material. But just so if you come in under budget, there's some other wish list items that you want to get done, it'll say something along the lines in the other capital expenditures as needed by the school district. So that's pretty much standard in all the language that the attorneys recommend so that in case things come in under budget, you'll be able to address some things, some other things in the school district that you may wish to, you may wish to take on.
Thank you. So here's the request here, same similar to the debt service transfer that the Board of Education considers to place a 15 million dollar bond issue on the April 8, 2025 ballot and addressing the areas of academic programming, safety, infrastructure and athletics as explained by Dr. Dietrich. And this is the proposed ballot language with also the proposed ballot letter. Next steps, the goal of administration is to present this proposal for action at a future meeting, January 21, 2025. If the board approves the requested proposals, we would then submit the ballot language to the county for certification, work through establishing whatever the proposition letters are, a website for the district, which would include information only, create communication materials, which Ed Rich is already working towards, and then conduct town hall meetings and informational meetings with community as we've been trying to do previously. And my role would be to continue to work with the community and support as needed. That concludes my presentation. I welcome any additional questions you may have.
Jenny, you had said earlier that you have reservations about going out for the full amount that we're able to. It is my recollection that the past two bonds have pretty much pushed the ceiling of, you know, what we were able to do. The approximately 8 million dollars we took for the ECC, you know, expansion and renovation. And then most recently, the 30 million that was able to be secured with the no-cost, no-tax-rate increase bond in 2020. I think at the time, 30 million dollars was, you know, an incredible amount for the board to consider. You know, the, obviously, the district's tax base had increased significantly. And, you know, it was like, wow, we could really do some things if we, you know, push this, you know, to, to the limit, which obviously resulted in the renovation of the high school, middle school, right? So, you know, I, I hear you on, you know, being concerned about maxing out. And we maxed out five years ago and we're at this space again of having some give again. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, that's helpful. When you guys, so when you were doing the 30 million dollar bond, you are saying like when you did that, you had built in a similar cushion where you priced it, it was priced lower, but you went for the full 30?
Correct, yeah. And, and again, I think obviously there were, there were things that didn't make it in, right? Like the track has been being talked about forever. And a lot, and obviously, there's still a lot of deferred maintenance, right? And we know that this is a dance too of, of what people, you know, see, as Mike was mentioning, right? Obviously, people can see the track and hear that their children are twisting ankles on it or whatever. And nobody sees the heat pumps, right? And yet those are really important too, right? And so I know Trent's brought up the, the concern about maintaining the, you know, massive amount of investment our community has already made in our facilities. our community has already made in our facilities. And, you know, that balance of what is visible and what is, you know, directly applicable to our kids, their, their legs getting pinched on, on the chairs and making sure that we have cameras to make sure we're letting in the right people when, you know, when doors aren't being, you know, monitored or things like that. So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think to a point to be made with this list, like you pointed out, I mean, there, I think economically it's, it's very uncertain at this point what costs will be when we actually do this. So I guess my, my charge would be to you all again is to go back through this list and be ready. Like you may have already prioritized the things in this list, but in the event, they can't all be done because that is a real possibility, I think. But that, yes, Katie, Katie, thank you. That's a helpful historical perspective.
Oh, and I forgot to mention this earlier. All right, so we're here for.
And, and Josh, sorry, just to make sure we're clear, we are going to meet virtually on Tuesday of this coming week as a board.
Correct.
To.
Actually vote.
To actually vote. I mean, we could, we could put it on tonight's agenda.
I'm fine, I mean.
Amend the agenda, but the plan right now is to meet on Tuesday. Is that?
Is everyone able to meet on Tuesday? No. I don't think a date was.
Do you wanna vote now?
I mean, does anybody have any concerns?
Can we vote by proxy on Tuesday? I don't think that's, that's permitted, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm not available on Tuesday, but, you know, if we wait till Thursday next week, that would be fine.
I would ask for Tuesday. I was meeting with.
Oh, all right, whatever.
If not, if not tonight, I would say Tuesday because Thursday puts us in a short window to get the information over to St. Louis County. So tonight preferably.
Monday or Wednesday?
What about Monday?
Monday's the holiday.
I mean, we still, I mean.
I think, I think the, I don't think there's any really opposition here. I mean, my sense for most people are probably gonna be supportive. The issue is how confident are we that this list is the correct list? I mean, that's what Jenny was getting to. And, and I would want to, you know, yeah, have a sense of items one, two and three, four, you know, kind of prioritize that list out, but.
And I don't think we're locked in with anything in the ballot language. I mean, we can continue to have those prioritization conversations, Brian, you know.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough, yeah.
All right, so why don't we move to amend the agenda to put this as an action item?
This evening?
Yeah, this evening. So can I get a motion?
I don't either.
I wanna look at the list more.
So we're not gonna have a motion to do it? Does that mean it doesn't have to pass?
Yeah, I'm willing to wait. I mean, I.
It doesn't matter to me. It really does. Yeah.
If anybody wants us to wait, then let's, let's just wait. I think that idea though is finding a time we can all seven be present.
All right, so I guess Tuesday's.
Well, Brian can't attend on Tuesday.
Well, I'm.
Oh, how about tomorrow?
That's why he asked, is Monday work or does Wednesday?
I mean, I'm, I, I'm not gonna ask somebody to work on a holiday, you know, so.
Okay, so then does Wednesday work?
Is Wednesday too tight?
Are, are we envisioning it's a meeting simply for this vote or?
Just for this vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what time do you intend the meeting?
Five thirty via Zoom was proposed, but Brian, if.
Five, if, if, you know, between five thirty and six is a window I'm available. I'm, I'm busy at, starting at six until nine P M.
So, okay, so.
Then, then, let's stick with the Tuesday.
Tuesday at five thirty.
Tuesday at five, all right, perfect, all right. Moving on. Let's see, where, um. Um, admin communications, program evaluation and instructional effectiveness by Dr..
Good evening, board. I have a short program update evaluation and goal setting. One year ago, I presented on instructional effectiveness, curriculum and reading support as a combined program evaluation. Since then and the, the time that has passed, we've reevaluated the effectiveness of those three things being lumped together into a really large program and then divided it out into three separate updates. So you'll see that reflected in our perpetual calendar and you'll then, of course, get this one-year update from me in regards to instructional effectiveness. On all the goals that we set forth a year ago, we are making adequate progress, if not have already met all of them, which is great. These are our goals moving forward. When I thought about instructional effectiveness and looked at the work that we've been doing with our board committee as well as our management oversight team, I made these goals based on being reflective on our strategic plan, seeing where we are and recognizing what next steps would be logical. So with that, I've got three goals proposed for this evening. By December twenty-twenty-five, the management oversight team will launch a district dashboard featuring data required to be communicated as part of our alternative A P R. Again, connecting the dots, we put a proposal in front of us to participate in the success-ready student network. Along with that, we eliminated the functions related with A P R and then we now are participating in what's called an alternative A P R. And one of the requirements of that is to have a local dashboard. We will be looking at our, for our students' board committee, what that could look like. I've built one and we're going to look at other districts that are doing the same thing and we're going to have that as a goal to make sure that that gets accomplished and data is available on our website to be interactive and available for our community. Goal number two, our management oversight team will look at that dashboard, obviously, and help, advise the district around our key performance areas. Right now, some of the wording in our strategic plan says things like increase. What does that mean? We, we're going to be looking at our baseline data, setting targets and then monitoring performance and then that, of course, will be integrated with the dashboard. And then item number three, sort of a lofty one, but it's one that we're excited to stretch ourselves with. The concept of utilizing our learning management system to be able to design a course that could potentially be delivered either asynchronously or measured via competency. So the idea that a, a student could demonstrate that they understand the topics, skills and ideas necessary to receive credit for that course, whether it be middle school or high school, and engage in some learning around that and try to design something, maybe even pilot it. Maybe we pilot during a summer program where we get a chance to, to engage students in learning in a new way. So those are our three goals related to instructional effectiveness and really the ability to clearly define what we want our students are, to know, understand and be able to do, which is P L C question number one, will allow us to design a course to meet those objectives. Questions that I may answer for you.
Just so I understand the last one correctly. Okay, so the idea would be to create a course a student could do online by themselves and would the goal be for certain students to do that, all stu-, like what is the, is the role for maybe a student that's sort of at their grade level reached a higher point? They could move on? Is that the idea or?
The idea is for us to prototype the, the idea of awarding credit.
Okay.
Competency. So similarly to you getting a badge for being good at your job, demonstrating you're proficient at a skill.
Okay.
This is just kind of the same way. Can we identify a course where this might work? And then be able to award competency based on that. Award credit, sorry, based on, award credit based on that.
This is.
Some examples of that is we have a lot of students that take, let's say, personal finance over the summer.
This would be high school?
Could be.
Okay, okay.
I think it, it would be hard for this to work for a five-year-old.
Yeah, okay, that's why I was, or, or just when you talk about credit, I mean, that's, right, okay.
Logical place for us to play in the sandbox and design.
Okay.
So I see things like personal finance, I see some things like P E's show up.
I see some other courses where there is content where a percentage of it you can do independently.
Okay.
And demonstrate that you're proficient in it independently.
Okay.
But then there's always, you know, the human element that has to be involved.
Okay.
So the idea here is to really design something and try something.
Okay, I get it now. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great question. Yes, sir.
Oh, I was gonna say, and eventually is this something that we could potentially use to catch up on credits to, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know, maybe have like an absence because of an illness or like, you know, prolonged illness or something like that to catch another credit or for whatever reason, or to get ahead like as an alternative to the, the early college stuff, you know, that might be less of a financial burden on the school. If that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and the idea truly is, what does it mean to get credit for this course? And if we know that, then we can design a course to, to meet that needs. And you'll notice the things that like, I, I put a minimum seventy percent. I don't know if that's the right number, but we're going to attempt to design something like that. But the human el- element has gotta be involved. There is no, you look at this and at first blush, you go, well, we're just trying to get rid of teachers and design courses. Absolutely not. That is not the case and that will, that is not the intent. The idea is, can we identify items and pieces clearly that, that students can do independently so that we can leverage the expertise of our workforce in a new and creative way?
So who sets the level of competency? Well, you know, is the teacher still the teacher of record? And they're gonna set the level of competency and it's gonna be based on some sort of substantive test?
Yeah, part of the, what we would do with that is we're starting with credit. So we're having the conversation of how do we award credit? What has to happen in order for a student to receive credit? And then part of those conversations, what we've done already is say, let's say if we look at biology, we now know because we, we've written it out, these are the essential outcomes for biology. You have to demonstrate mastery with that. The next step we don't have yet is, to your point, what does proficiency or mastery look like, sound like? What artifacts or evidence can be associated with that? That goes into this.
I would add to your question that it's not always a grade. And so when you're thinking about competency-based education or personalized learning, it's personalized and based on what is of interest to students. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a test, but based on the criteria that's identified. So you can use a rubric to determine whether or not the student has mastered the skills and concepts that are within that standard.
How does this differ from current resources that students have available to them? Like summer launch programs or online advanced placement programs that students are taking in?
Yeah, great question. It's very similar, but it's not our people. It's not our level of mastery. So there is a portion of our student population that are evaluated by Springfield teachers and get credit based on Springfield's evaluation. I believe our M R H teachers have more to give and have a different perspective on our kids and know our kids better.
Okay.
We have finance first.
All right, I guess we're gonna do this. Um, let's talk about finance.
Good evening, everybody. So let's get started on the revenue through December. We're right at fourteen point four million or right at fifty percent of the budget, which is about two point two million higher from last year. Those increased revenues are due to the insurance recovery, C B E grant. Dr. McKee was so successfully able to secure the M S D grant. In lieu of taxes, with the closing of the Cambridge Commons T I F, the D N R scrap tire grant and the S S D reimbursement for salaries. Jumping into expenditures, Jenny, you did have a couple of questions, so I wanted to hit those real quick. So thank you for sending those to me so that I can research them and get those answered for you. So the biggest of them, I think, is the insurances. So we did receive a message from the C E O of Music, the Missouri United Insurance Program, School Insurance Program. This past spring, Ron Orr, former CFO at Pattonville, that we would receive rate increases. There was no indication as to what those rate increases would be, so we took what we thought was a conservative approach and we did not get that. As a matter of fact, the day that those invoices were released, immediately the listsers started blowing up from all of the St. Louis County school districts. I know one of our nearest neighbors that I speak to regularly, they got hit pretty hard as well. I will say that we were not expecting anything of the nature that we received. So we're all a little disappointed that we weren't given a little bit better indication. We went with historical trends and we got what we got. So we're gonna try as hard as we can to absorb those things in the budget. We've already began, begun cutting spending. We've pulled back a lot of budget from each of the buildings and also the departments and we still have some work there to do. So I'm hoping to bring a budget amendment very soon that will give us a truer look of where we might end up as opposed to where we're at. But yeah, that's, that's a big deal.
I just wanna add so that community does not think we're taking building budgets or department budgets. We implemented this year as a part of my collaborations, I track the expenditures. So for example, if a principal indicated that they were purchasing math manipulatives to support mathematics and it's January and you haven't bought them, then the question is, are they really needed instructionally? So we didn't take it. We set it in a contingency fund as a means to determine if we are over allocating for expenses. That also includes central office department goals. Individuals have money set to decide in a contingency account as well. I just wanted to cover that.
I appreciate it. It was a much nicer way to say that. And the audit, we will be going out to bid for our audit services.
Okay.
I believe that those costs have increased.
It's a lot.
Quite dramatically.
Yeah.
I'm also quite disappointed. K E B has been a great partner with the district since two thousand and six. I would like for that partnership to continue, but things will need to change.
Thank you.
Chris, does that reflect the need for the single audit? I mean, that.
That's part of it, yes.
Increased expense from previous years.
Yeah, yeah, and to speak to that briefly, the, the threshold that triggers the single audit is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures. That threshold has been raised to a million for the next year. So it's quite likely that we'll not need a single audit again for some time, but I can't say that with certainty because things change so rapidly in this world that we could, I mean, I can't expect a giant federal grant to come rolling through. But if it does, that could push us over again. But I would expect a single audit will probably fall away, at least for the next year, looking at our numbers now. And let's see here, some of your questions tie directly to each other, just based on function or object, which, which side of the, the account code you were looking on. So the Board of Education, the twenty-three eleven, that function code, a lot of those are related to those insurances.
Insurances, okay. Yep, thank you.
And then buildings and construction, we did do our final payout to Legacy, right, Dr. D? We're done with Legacy now? They were a fantastic partner. They got this building where we needed it to be and we made that final payout. So we're still tidying up a few things, but we'll bring up the final report on how that construction landed in, in the coming months. And then child care fees. So this has been an interesting experience as well. So we went with a new invoicing and billing system and collection system this year, which is dramatically improved over the archaic way we were doing it prior. However, after we got into it, we realized that there was not, the system doesn't provide us a good way to determine Discover Club fees from preschool fees. So it's been quite a challenge for Dr. Bichard, our accountant, our consultant accountant that he had for a while, to split those fees apart. So right now, the majority of the fees that are coming in for Discover Club are being recorded in preschool.
Okay, so they just have to be adjusted.
So that they're recorded. Stephanie, Dr. Bichard provided us today through December. So Tony, our accountant, will be splitting those up over the next couple of days and into the next week so that next month's financial statements, you should have a more accurate look of where those revenues fell, whether they were fees or tuition.
So it's, it's, we are collecting them, they're just fees.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And that, that was really my question, is it, because it was so much lower, like, what's, but I see.
And if you look at the percentage of collection on preschool and the percentage of collection on Discover Club.
Right, yeah, they're, yeah.
They're both askew from the prior year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, I think I covered all of those.
Yeah.
Okay, so on the purchase service side here, we are, seventy-seven of our expenses are devoted to employee salaries and benefits. I have to, I have to continue to say that. As of December thirty-first, those expended, our total expenditures were nine point one million dollars. Purchase services make up about one point seven or forty-eight percent of the budget. That is slightly higher than the prior year. Supplies are just under a. That is slightly higher than the prior year. Supplies are just under a million at forty one percent. And the prior year was right around a hundred and fifty or forty point five percent. So we're, we're in the neighborhood there. Capital outlay expenditures, two eighty one, seven twenty six, seventy percent higher than the prior year. Long and short-term debt, uh, that's twenty percent of the budget there. Our interest payment has been made for the lease purchase or the COPS. We have one more interest and one more, and one final principal payment to make in this year. Those will be coming up. So overall, our operating expenses through December are twelve million, two three one, four hundred and fifty three dollars. Right now, we're budgeting for an ending fund balance of thirty three point nine percent. And in the coming months, we'll bring you an amendment that will show you a truer look of where we will land. Thanks for moving around a little bit, so I'm, I'm excited to get that done so that I can quit doing numbers and like that and see a lot of figures.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, now on to board communications and discussions. The first thing we've got is the board calendar events.
Dr. Jameson, could you remind us what's happening at the virtual community roundtable or in the community conversation on the twenty eighth?
Uh, given opportunity for community to ask questions about the items that were identified. We did send the surveys out, but it's a way to seek additional feedback around the work that we're doing. So as outlined, we do need to increase engagement with community. And I've found that we've had more participation with the virtual sessions. So I'm hoping that we can gather some more data collected there to inform the decisions that we're making.
Okay, okay. So then on the twenty first, as we discussed, we are going to be voting on the, um, the bond issues. And then also calendars for our students committee. Let's see, um, twenty eighth, we've got the virtual community conversations. And then there's also the third one for our youth committees. So I think that that would be it. And do you not have, like, calendar, actual, all the events, what the kids are doing?
We have the speech and debate tournament.
All right, so they're, they're doing the-
This weekend.
Pantakes and a movie at the elementary on Friday, the twenty fourth, voices. Uh, it's inside out, too.
Else, okay.
Okay, there we go.
Um, all right, and so next we've got our power board reports, um, and our power board members. I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, but-
Hi, I'm Vera Pantazesus and I'm representing power board tonight. I am a junior at MRH High School and I'm also on the For Our Resources Committee here.
And speech and debate, apparently.
Oh, yes, and speech and debate. I could list all my extra group members.
If, if you want to.
We don't have a presentation for a power board tonight or an ask, but they did ask me to briefly touch on the issues in the proposed bond issue. Like that you have furniture and also under the athletics part, um, the track and field updates, because those are the ones that we decided most affected the students from all schools. Um, so in the past semester, we've, we've been meeting with students from all schools, ECC, elementary, middle school, high school, and talking to them on what they believe should be improved in their school, what the biggest problems they see are. And always consistently in the top three is furniture and improved spaces in their schools for, you know, more safe and inspirational learning environments. Um, yeah, so in my personal experience, I mean, I've noticed problems in the high school. I have two younger sisters, one in the middle school, one in the elementary, that have also brought this up. Um, and I believe that it truly affects students very directly. And that's why, you know, if there are further meetings to discuss priorities for the bond issue, the furniture and the track and field are what students bring up most to me personally, to the power board as a whole. That's what we see in our data. Um, yeah, so while all issues that are in the bond are incredibly important, safety, you know, keeping everything updated and even the stuff that isn't, you know, actually visible to students, this is what's going to make the most change in the students' minds because they're going to see actual, real change in their schools, in the district. Um, and it also reflects us as a district, better like the speech and debate tournament happening this weekend. If we don't have good furniture, we've got kids from all over the area coming to our school and, you know, our chairs are all cracked, but it just doesn't, it doesn't look very good for MRH as a whole.
But does it distract them?
Well, I mean, that is a, well, that's it.
But you guys aren't competing in this one, right? So it doesn't give us a competitive advantage, but-
All right, fine.
But, um, yeah, that's, that's what they asked me to present on, just showing that, um, students really, really care that this is a priority for the board and that this is really meaningful change for everyone in all schools. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so then we've got committee reports. I don't think we have any committees that mentioned here.
No, but Trent and I had our Joe's Place meeting last night. We had another great meeting. Um, we just sort of went over the end of the year stuff, finances. Uh, but the one thing I think we really want to highlight is that coming up on February eighth, from seven to eleven PM, is a fundraiser. It's food, drinks, and live music. Um, you can go to the Joe's Place website and click on news and events, go to events, and you can, um, now is that right? Yeah, you click on it, you can buy a ticket right there. Um, there will also be silent auction and raffle, so please come out, bring a friend, and celebrate the wonderful work being done with Joe's Place. Trent, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
The location is House of Blue Lights in Brentwood.
Are there a need for auction items? Are you square?
Oh, okay. I think you emailed, you said anyone, so we didn't, we, no one forgot that. So you're on the list. I guess I should have let you know.
Um, all right, so any other, uh, that, well, we've got our committee coming up. All right, uh, then we've got, um, three that we had before.
There we go. Um, let's, Discover Club, oh, sorry, now we're getting on the action items. So the first one up is the Discover Club in preschool, which we have tuition rates that were presented on, um, in a previous meeting.
Motion to approve-
Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry.
You think you can go forward on this? We'll-
No, 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 there, uh, we're-
We'll, we can add the action items after.
No, there wasn't, just the action, is that an action?
We can, we can discuss during the action.
Okay, cool. All right, perfect. Okay, all right, so, um, the first one we're-
So motion to approve, uh, Discover, Discover Club and preschool tuition rates?
All in favor?
Oh, I had a question, sorry. This is our discussion for, um, so this is just the one-year increase rates, right? Because we were presented with like a three-year. This is the one-year? For twenty percent?
Chris, did you?
Yeah, you're just doing it for the one-
The one-year.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And I, I just, I just want to take a minute and acknowledge to our parents. I do think this is necessary, that we, we have to increase these rates. I think unfortunately, I do, I do appreciate that our district doesn't want to make money off of it, but we also can't afford to keep losing so significantly. And I think we're a little behind. A lot of other districts have really increased their rates. Um, I think we provide a, a wonderful preschool experience. That's what hooked us into this district with world-class teachers. But I want to acknowledge that this is going to be hard for a lot of families and that, that is not lost on me. And I apologize for that. Uh, it really stinks, but, um, but unfortunately, I think this is the thing we have to do right now. But I, I just wanted to, to acknowledge that to everyone who's going to have to, um, figure out a way to come up with this difference, so.
Agreed.
Agreed. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then, um-
Move to approve the policy batch, twenty twenty-four C MSBA policy batch as presented, second?
All right, I'm sorry, I had, um, one question. I was on the, um, substitute employment, uh, policy that's GB one. It says, so the, the change here is that the district will provide all substitute teachers access to a state survey that they're required to complete in accordance with the law. Substitute teachers under the age of twenty will not teach in grades nine through twelve. So two questions, is, um, the statement about substitute teachers under the age of twenty will not teach in grades nine through twelve? Is that a district policy or is this a response to a state law?
That's a great question. Um, I would have to do some research on that one. But in regards to the, um, survey, it, it is required by DESI, but we don't facilitate this survey. Kelly Services actually distributes.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is that like a credentials survey or some kind of check on credit? Is that what that is?
It's really odd because the participation rate is not as high as they anticipated, but it's more or less them completing it at the end. And I- Dr. Ambrose Phillips, do you know what they do with the data for that?
I think, so the state actually put that survey in place. It's a way to, um, grow the teaching profession. So the substitute teachers, um, assesses how their day went. And the goal ultimately is to ensure that we are doing more, uh, in terms of recruitment for individuals who are serving in our building as subs already. And so that is, that is handled through Kelly Services. And, um, I can also check on the other requirement as well.
I Googled it and I found Missouri statute one six eight point oh three six, which is substitute teacher certificates. And it says in subsection eight two, no individual to whom the state board grants a certificate under this section and who is under twenty years of age shall be a substitute teacher in grades nine to twelve.
It's, it's in the gray area above, too. It outlines what changed in the law.
Oh, sorry, you were still on the first one? I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
But thank you for adding, yeah.
My apologies.
Both of those are things, like Kelly Services makes sure that they're always in line with any state statute. And so because we contract for those services, um, and they handle the administrative roles of that, they always make sure that anything that changes, that they stay up to date on, so.
For those who don't know, they changed the requirements for substitute teachers. So initially, you had to have sixty credit hours. I believe you can do so many hours of training in order to become a substitute teacher.
And this is primarily in response to the lack of teachers in education in other parts of the state, not necessarily here. So you've got a first and a second.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, now we've got some additional panels from the amended agenda.
Move to approve the huddle agreement as presented, second?
Any other questions?
Uh, my only question is about the recurring costs of this. It's, it says that it's being funded through athletic gate receipts. I'm concerned that, um, for instance, we only have, uh, extra-large shorts for the girls' basketball team and that maybe we should be spending money on, um, supplying uniforms. I, I, I'm not against voting for this. I just wonder about the recurring costs and how it's going to be paid for.
So Mr. Davenport is here. I do believe that he created a, a uniform. Did you want to come up, Mr. Davenport? He did create a uniform cycle, so, uh, uh, one year we actually purchased basketball uniforms. I believe we purchased-
This year was boys' basketball, next year should be girls' basketball uniforms. So there's going to be a three-year cycle. So within the three years, every, uh, every sports team, athletic program will get new uniforms.
Every three years, okay. What, what do we use, what do we typically use gate receipts for? I guess it's a good question to understand, like, is this taking away from something else we would usually be funding?
So the gate receipts are typically used for just any kind of miscellaneous thing that comes up. Right now, we would use, we're using gate receipts for, uh, things such as like when we go to state, uh, for different athletic events.
So if we are using, how, how much do we, do we know how much we typically bring in in gate receipts a year?
Uh, so between gate, with, gate receipts last year and donations, we were just a little bit under twenty four thousand dollars. And so we've also, uh, ran a campaign with Snap Raise. And, uh, we actually had one of our students, uh, who was very active, uh, within the campaign, which helped push the, uh, huddle fundraiser funds up as well.
I have actually a really exciting project. A student came over and met with me for a few hours. We put together a tracking spreadsheet and I will tell you, he did a fantastic job. And the fundraising receipts, uh, the ease with which we were able to do the fundraiser, collect the receipts, record the receipts, and present the results, it has never been so streamlined. So I, that student's done with that project, I'd like to know.
Correct, and we raised a little bit, a little bit over four thousand dollars. And this was just only one athletic team that participated. Uh, we currently are going to have, uh, several teams, uh, participating in that athletic, uh, huddle fundraiser Snap Raise account. Uh, this upcoming spring. Yeah, with soccer, boy's soccer, uh, should be just ending in a few days. And then we also will have, uh, our spring sports who will be participating as well.
It, it, just to confirm what huddle is, it, it's like a, a recording, uh, it allows you to like record games, but also then to interact with like coaches if you're looking for a scholarship? Is that what it is?
Yes, it also allows all of our students and activities to create profiles and portfolios. So, um, it does, it's not exclusive just to athletes. But just say for instance, we have speech and debate, who may be able to record, uh, a video and then they can put it on their particular profile and universities and colleges, uh, can, can view it. I'm sorry? Yes. So, so it, it allows for everyone to use it.
You know, I share Trent's concern about the ongoing cost. Eighty-five hundred dollars out of, um, current, I guess, gate receipts, twelve thousand seven hundred. That's, you know, three quarters of our gate receipts and fundraising combined is going towards one software product is, and, and the equipment associated with it. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, we also are looking to raise, uh, gate prices up for next year, uh, from three to five dollars, which will also increase our revenue.
Right, but, um, but the benefit is, uh, is the, um, it's on to the assumption that this huddle software would continue to be used as a recruiting tool for athletics and as you say, other programs. But what happens when that recruiting software changes? Then we have to switch to another software or another app or another tool?
So, so currently, right now, seventy-five percent of high schools in Missouri are using huddle. So the likelihood that it will go away, um, in a, in a relatively quick manner would probably be unlikely.
Okay. It, it does seem rather high and, uh, I guess I'm just trying to be convinced that it's worth eighty-five hundred every single year, presumably going up in future years.
So, so that price, the eighty-five hundred, that's locked in for the three years. So that, so that price, and, and we actually, uh, so that price will be a continuous price for, uh, the foreseeable future.
And the students themselves still have to pay their own individual fees, is that right? That's what I see. They're not, you're, we're not paying the, um, uh, the annual subscription fees. Is that for the students themselves or?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
The, 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 the proposal sent to us says district monies will not be used to fund huddle installation or annual subscription fees.
Right, so that, so that would mean that the gate and then any kind of fundraiser efforts would be used, uh, to fund huddle. So I wouldn't be using any of the budgeted funds that we have in order to purchase huddle.
Okay, well, that makes me now doubly concerned.
Can I add, um, Brian? So, um, for families or students who rely on athletics to gain entry into college, the benefit to have more access and have more coaches to be able to see their footage will increase the likelihood of them getting additional views. My cousin is a student at, uh, Maryland and he's a QB one and he used huddle and that's how he was actually able to, uh, get his scholarships. So, you know, the goal is, if we're talking about equity, um, to provide opportunities and access for those kiddos who, uh, may not necessarily get the academic scholarships to attend college.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'm certainly sympathetic to that very much. But, um, what, then what you're saying is, I, I, I don't mean to sound, make the sound, uh, um, unhelpful, but we're basically going to pay for a service so students get an individual benefit of a college scholarship down the road when they leave the district. So we're provide, we're trying to provide a service for them at this stage that is, has an individual, personal benefit to them down the road.
I would say, um, it's a both and for us. So if you think about M sub six and how we are awarded points, uh, students graduating, um, but also post-second- I would say, um, it's a both and for us. So if you think about MSUB six and how we are awarded points, uh, students graduating, um, but also post-secondary for college and career readiness is a part of how we receive points for accreditation. So, um, for me, whether a student wants to go directly into the workforce or into college, I believe it's our responsibility to support them in those efforts.
Sure.
Um, and there are a lot of students who would actually benefit. So, um, Mr. Davenport discussed speech and debate. You have soccer, basketball. We also have students who are swimming through the co-op, the University City. So I do think that the ability to increase capacity for use will be there. Um, but for me, I think the eighty-five hundred dollars is worth it if they can get a sports scholarship to cover a large chunk of their, uh, tuition.
Yeah, and in addition to the, uh, students receiving scholarships for athletic purposes, it also allows us to broadcast games, and for us to also be able to use our actual broadcast team, uh, would allow them to be on the air, which could also generate more revenue with, uh, with advertisement.
Uh, it, in terms of who can use it, do, do kids who are involved in like music or theater, does it work with that, that group?
Wherever our Huddle camera is, they'll be able to play from those particular places, but then any student who is in activities.
So any activity, like if you're a music student, you could record. Okay, okay, okay.
And then you would, you would upload the videos or you would upload pictures.
Sure.
Into the Huddle system, and then which will allow others to view it.
Okay, so if someone.
Used for performing arts, too?
Well, we, we have to be careful with the mu- with the performing arts because.
Okay.
Um, the, especially on the drama side.
Okay.
Stretching the rights are.
Okay.
Intense.
So this.
Like a dance performance or music performance.
I mean.
What about theater performance that we've paid for the?
This couldn't be used for like our fall and spring plays through the drama department?
Okay, so it's possible. It could also be used, but that, with that caveat.
Be used for as portfolio, so there may be, so just say if we have a student, uh, who is in the play, there may be pictures or there may be snippets of things that we could use in order to promote them to gain scholarships, uh, for their particular craft.
Okay, so sorry, one more question. So like, if I, if I had a, if I had a Huddle profile, could, is it, is it only things recorded here at school, or could I record myself at home doing something or play, practicing my sport and upload it?
My understanding is it could, the video, you can upload any video.
Oh, okay, so, okay, okay. But, which widens the possibility, okay. We'll need something.
Okay, um, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, unopposed. Um, any abstentions? No. Alright, so it passes, and the next.
Thank you.
Move to approve the Corrigan and Clark proposal or contract as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Um, so, this is a question from Mike. How, how is this going to improve what we already have from Navigate? I've now spent way too much time going through the Navigate list, and then subsequent making my own lists, and then looking at the new list that came y- yesterday.
Absolutely.
Uh, so Steve Raskin, uh, vice president, is that right? Yeah, uh, with Corrigan Clark, um, they're the ones that were voted on tonight, but the, the difference between the lists was, I would say that the initial visits were more of a survey of the buildings. Um, so we had a committee. Some of those people on the committee were architects, a lot of them were teachers, uh, myself, and we went through the buildings. But it is not to the depth, um, that we would receive with this investigation or this, um, evaluation. Um, in addition, the report that they give us helps us schedule out twenty year, I think, uh, it's twenty forty-three is the one I saw in the public. Um, so the ability to use this information, plan out over the next twenty years with escalation costs and see what is it gonna cost us if we don't do it now, and what does it cost us then? You're probably better to speak at this, so.
Certainly, so this is a very, uh, data-centered, intensive, uh, evaluation of your, uh, existing facilities. It is not destructive. We're not tearing holes in walls or anything like that, but we are doing a very in-depth evaluation of the site, the structure of the envelope, curtain wall systems, roofing, heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, plumbing, elevators, life safety, fire protection, and accessibility. Uh, like I said, this is very comprehensive. We literally go through and we take a look at every one of your package rooftop units. We'll take a photograph of the barcode on the side of the unit. We're gonna know how many years of lifespan is available in that unit. You might have two years, you might have ten years. Um, as, uh, Dr. Dietrich had mentioned, this is gonna provide not only data in terms of where you are, but it's also gonna provide a detailed cost estimate in terms of those items that will need to be, um, repaired or maintained or even replaced, uh, within a specified period of time. We look at them from, uh, immediate needs, which is something from like zero to three years. We look at short-term in terms of three to five, five to seven, and only up to twenty-year range. The important thing is we're noting is that a roofing system, for instance, might have a thirty-year life cycle. As we look at a roof system today, you may not need to do anything with that roof, but in five years, you wanna make sure you can budget for that. So what we do is we evaluate and develop very detailed, uh, budget estimates. Uh, we'll include cost data, we'll include, uh, escalation for those data, so not only today, tomorrow, but in five years, we'll understand what it's gonna be to, for the cost to repair and replace that specific roofing unit. I saw on that list a lot of, uh, uh, really exciting equipment like mechanical and plumbing, uh, things that you don't typically see but need to be taken care of. These will all be evaluated and identified as part of the report, and most importantly, you'll have a detailed cost estimate as, for the repair and replacement value of those over a period of time. In addition, we also evaluate something called the Facility Condition Index Score. That basically is a percentile of what are the, uh, remediation repair costs relative to the overall replacement cost of a building. What that basically tells us is, at some point, there comes a point where a building might have a, uh, FCI score of fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five percent. That's relatively very good. That means that you're rela- you're putting minimal numbers of dollars into the maintenance of that facility. Um, you've got many older facilities. Those buildings, for instance, and I'm not presuming that your buildings would fall into this category, but there comes a certain point where those numbers get into the thirty, thirty-five, and forty percent category, where you're investing a significant amount of, uh, monies into those facilities, and that's where you. Exactly, and you start to identify what is the best use of the district resources in terms of, uh, maintaining educational excellence for your students.
So this is a twenty-year study or tw- twenty-year forecast approximately, and is it, is there a likelihood that this is gonna uncover other things that we need to do immediately, that are gonna impact the amount of money that we need to bond this year?
I can't tell you what this report might find.
Yeah.
Because we haven't done it. Um, the district has done a wonderful job. Uh, Dr. Dietrich and his team have been in these buildings, uh, each and every single day, so they're, they're very familiar. But this assessment is, is different. We actually are bringing in assessors who are looking at this building with a different lens, with a very microscopic lens. So, I use the, uh, example of the roof, the example of the mechanical systems. We also look at things in terms of accessibility. Sometimes you walk past a door or you walk past a, an opening, and you might see it every single day for twenty years. When somebody looks at it with a fresh set of eyes and they realize.
Yes.
That's an accessibility issue. We need to put it on the list. So we may identify some things like that, I, I don't know, but I can, I can assure you, it'll be comprehensive, it will be detailed. You'll have information relative to costs, uh, immediate need costs today, tomorrow, over a twenty-year cycle. You will see dollar values with escalation for what those costs might be. Uh, it'll also include a detailed facility condition assessment as part of that evaluation, as well as all of the data, both in terms of a written narrative report, as well as the cost data analyses as part of this. Uh, I think it's also important to note that as part of our proposal, uh, we anticipate being onsite, uh, the week of February third, and having to this board our recommendations, at least in draft form, uh, before your meeting on February twentieth.
And how many people would be coming onsite approximately?
Uh, that is, uh, a little bit up in the air. Uh, typically, we are working with a nationally-recognized, uh, evaluation firm called Bureau Veritas. Uh, we will be bringing both our staff from Corrigan Clark as well as some of those staff. Typically, those are teams between three and four. Um, we can do between thirty and forty thousand square feet per day. Obviously, we'll be looking at all of the district's facilities, and we've already included that as part of our proposal. Um, I don't know the specific details, uh, but as I said, we'll be getting work on, uh, the week of February third, and we expect to have that wrapped up, uh, within a month.
And so it's a twenty-year plan, so we're gonna go through many, many boards in twenty years. Um, how is the data that is gonna be collected going to be passed on to future boards? Is it gonna be collected in some sort of database format, or?
Well, thank you, that's, that is an excellent question. Um, one of the things that we do is, not only are we gonna be providing lots of wonderful studies that have detailed information, uh, we're also gonna be providing something called Asset Calc, uh, which is an online database system which the district will have full access and rights to for, I believe, three years as part of this contract, where you'll be able to get into this system and actually see and observe and, uh, look at all of the data, all of the critical infrastructure items, everything from.
Like a Brightly?
Uh, yeah, Brightly is a competitor to the system that we are providing. Um, I'm not familiar with Brightly, but I know it does a similar function. Uh, but you'll have everything from detailed evaluations of every single building system. It'll also be broken out not only by facility and address, but also how many dollars do you have for safety? How many dollars do you have for your building envelope? How many dollars do you have for accessibility? So this information will supplement a lot of the hard work that has already been done and provide you a greater level of detail.
And what is the ongoing cost to maintain our data in that database? Zero, so it's three years of access, but then?
I'd like to confirm that three years, but typically it's two, three years, and there's zero cost to the district.
Year four?
Uh, year four, we can have that conversation, um, and I'd have to get that information for you, sir.
Okay.
Was, was this done in the twenty twenty bond issuance with the thirty million, or was it done in twenty sixteen?
Has it been done?
We've never done anything to this, to this degree. This is, this will be the most comprehensive report on our facilities and infrastructure that we've ever had.
The recommendations for the bond project in twenty twenty were made by the architecture firm that we ultimately contracted with, so, you know, in hindsight, maybe some, uh, blind spots there.
Well, you know, I have this interest in sort of looking at, at maintenance across time and not doing it as big spurts of bond money, but actually trying to, to keep track of some of the stuff as an ongoing project instead of having it all pile up. Yeah, I, I understand. I just, I think it's good to talk about it.
And the high school is, how, how old now? A hundred and, I mean, how, how, yeah, yeah, so we're close to a hundred.
And, and one year old.
Yeah. That's true. Okay, yeah, so.
Thank you for answering the questions.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lot better understanding.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Aye. Yeah.